Alright, so it's 5:30 and we want to go ahead and call the call to order the public hearing for the White Rock Water Resource Recovery Facility project. What we call the CWSRF 83 funded project from the New Mexico Environment Department. This is the project to reconstruct the White Rock. What is currently the White Rock wastewater treatment facility and as is now being called the White Rock Water Resource and Recovery Facility. In the panelists here, we have Andrea Telmo. She is with the New Mexico Environment Department, myself Clay Mosley, Todd Burt with Bohannon Houston, Justin Logan with Aqua Engineering in Salt Lake City, Donzel Worthington with Bohannon Houston in Albuquerque, and Philo Shelton, the Utilities Manager for Department of Public Utilities here in Los Alamos, Julie Williams Hill, who is our Public Information Officer, Department of Public Utilities here in Los Alamos, and James Allerid, the Deputy Manager, Manager of Engineering here in here at Los Alamos County Department of Public Utilities. So we'll go ahead and put the the public hearing agenda up here. Go you can go and do that, Todd.
There you go, Clay.
Okay, so this is the agenda for tonight. It should go fairly quickly. This is the, like I said, the public hearing for the White Rock Water Resource Recovery Facility. So I'll give a little project introduction here. So the White Rock Wastewater Plant, the current White Rock Wastewater Plant was built in the 1960s. And you know, it served its functional life. I think we've gotten everything out of it that we possibly can. We've undergone a lot of upgrade projects to keep it running, but you know, in the end, it's time to replace these when the water quality no longer meets either current. You know, our current requirements or current our expectations, and that's where we are. So it's been some time coming. We'll we'll go over it in the presentation, but since about 2010, we've been planning this project. And in the meantime, we've actually executed a number of projects just to keep the current plant running at at our standards. So we'll go, we'll do the project presentation here in just a few minutes and then we'll open it up for questions and answers. So we'll turn the the hearing here over to Todd Burt. He is the Engineering Project Manager and Lead Engineer for the project from Bohannon Houston. So if you want to go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you, Clay. Appreciate the the introduction and on on the White Rock project and and before we get into a lot of the details associated with the project itself. Andrea, if you could maybe just talk a little bit about the EID process and the overview and and the need for the hearing on tonight.
Sure, thank you, Todd. So as Clay said, the county has been working on this project since about 2010. And in 2016, a preliminary engineering report and environmental information document were prepared for the project. At the time, it was unknown where the funding for construction would be coming from. And since then, the county applied for funding through the New Mexico Environment Department's Clean Water State Revolving Loan Loan Fund Program or Clean Water SRF. And as a requirement of that program, which is funded through the EPA, we must follow NEPA or the National Environmental Policy Act. And so and in so I guess in preparation or for that, the county did have an environmental information document prepared back in 2016 in anticipation of possibly getting funding from this program. And part of that process is holding a public hearing, which presents the project and also the findings from the environmental information document. So the New Mexico Environment Department did review and approve both documents, both the preliminary engineering report or PER and the environmental information document or EID. And this is the last step in finalizing the NEPA process by holding the public hearing. So what I'm going to do now is just go over the environmental information document and the findings. So in the environmental information document, what what is covered are potential environmental impacts from the project and what the mitigation measures are. So the EID was completed in 2016 and that included a biological survey, a cultural resources survey, as well as consultation and coordination with federal, local and federal, state and local agencies, as well as tribes that that oversee these resources and could be potentially impacted by the project. So the environmental resources that are reviewed in the EID include land use, flood plains, wetlands, water resources, air quality, biological resources, archaeological, cultural, historic resources, socioeconomics and environmental justice, and other resources, including public health and safety, energy, transportation, visual impacts and noise. So what I'm going to do now is go over just a summary of the impacts and the mitigations mitigation measures that were covered in the environmental information document. So in regards to land use, there are no impacts to land use because all the the project is occurring on the existing wastewater facility site. With regards to water resources, surface water, so during construction, the contractor will be required to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which will mitigate and prevent any type of impacts, temporary impacts from construction to surface water. Another thing in regards to impacts to surface water, the facility currently has a surface water discharge permit and discharges to the Canyada del Buey. And the facility, the facility does meet the current discharge permit requirements. However, the new facility will improve the effluent quality, which will be even better than what the quality of effluent that's currently produced. In regards to groundwater, the facility does have a groundwater discharge permit through the New Mexico Environment Department and treated effluent is currently used to irrigate Overlook Park. And again, the new facility will improve the effluent quality. In regards to flood plains, there are no flood plains in the project area. Wetlands, there are no wetlands in the project area. In regards to air quality, during construction, the contractor will be required to to mitigate any or mitigate any fugitive fugitive dust during construction by watering. And during periods of high winds, construction will be suspended. So that dust isn't produced. See. Now, in regards to biological resources, as I mentioned, a biological survey was done. There are no threatened or endangered species in the area. A cultural resources survey was conducted and during construction, should any cultural resources be uncovered, construction will be stopped and the appropriate agencies will be consulted. There are no impacts in regards to socioeconomic and environmental justice issues. And see. In terms of terms of cumulative impacts of the project, the cumulative impact will be beneficial to the community of White Rock and Los Alamos County because they will have an improved wastewater facility and improved effluent quality. So that's all I have in terms of the EID.
Okay, well, thank you, Andrea. Appreciate the the summary on the EID. And so we'll now talk a little bit more about the specifics of the overall project and some activities that have occurred more recently associated with getting the improvements done. And so first, we've already talked quite a bit about what has been done. Clay and Andrea really did a good job of summarizing the work that the county has been has led over the past decade or so to to keep the facility operational, to maintain it the way it needs to be. And this list here is again, just a summary of things that that the county has done. You know, like they've mentioned, the facility is was built in the 60s. Improvements have been done in the late 70s. When when deficiencies were found in 2010, the county did step in and take care of those those short term improvements that needed to be taken care of to keep the facility operational. So really, at this point, in the last couple of years, the county has taken the steps to hire a design engineering firm, which in this case is Bohannon Houston, to work on the design phase of the project in order to implement the activities to construct the new improvements for the facility. So since that time, Bohannon Houston with Aqua Engineers and the county have continued to progress the steps necessary to to complete the project. So we first started with what we refer to as a design analysis report. That report summarizes the design criteria for the project, looks at different options to to as to how we should improve the the overall site. Gives us a better understanding of the design criteria necessary to to implement the proposed improvements. With those recommendations in the design analysis report, we moved into a pre-selection of equipment phase. In the mid 2020 timeframe, the final selection was completed in August 2020. And this includes the items that are most critical to the operation of the facility once it's complete. It allows the the county to have an input during or prior to the selection of a contractor on items that are the most critical to the process of the overall facility. And most recently, well, and we've incorporated that information into plans and specifications, continue to move forward with the design. All in anticipation that the construction activities are are will be proceeding quickly over 2021. Most recently, we submitted the 95% plans and specifications to the county for their review just earlier this week. We will be going through a review process and incorporating items that are necessary prior to the to the bidding of the project. So so it's it's important to note this this facility has continued to be maintained well by the county over its many, many years of 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 operation and 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 we'll be looking towards improvements in the next coming couple of years. So so next step is what are we trying to accomplish? Okay. The project area again is is shown in in this aerial here. So the existing facility is shown on the on the aerial photo, including all the features that are associated with the with the White Rock Plant. And some of the goals that we have have already been been stated, but the county currently uses Class 1A effluent quality reuse for you know, for so for for ballparks and other areas that are adjacent to the facility and they'd like to continue expanding the use of that. They would like to have high quality effluent even more more readily available. So the facility that has been designed includes provisions for for effluent reuse. We want to continue to maintain less than 10 milligrams per liter total nitrogen, have the capability of processing material onsite and using that at the compost facility and repurposing existing facilities to the extent possible. The repurposing allows us to use some of the existing features on the existing plant for different purposes in the future. And specifically, one of the items that we were most considered with the county was how we could expand the storage available for effluent reuse. So things such as the trickling filters and the existing secondary clarifiers have been evaluated for their ability to be used as an affluent reuse bond in lieu of what they're currently being used for. Another item that was reused was the administration building that currently is within an office in between the digesters. That building will also be remodeled in order to provide laboratory facilities, administration office, a bathroom with a shower in it for the operators to use in lieu of building a new a new building onsite. So main intent of ours was also to optimize facility design for functionality and operations. The operators have been highly engaged throughout the process to to gain their input into things that help them to to maintain the facility during its operation. So in in general, that's a a quick overview of the goals for the project. Now we'd like to talk a little bit more in detail about the improvements that are being proposed at the facility itself. And I'll pass these next couple of slides over to Justin Logan to talk about the improvements.
Thanks, Todd. So what we're showing here is just the the design criteria for this facility upgrade. The average inflow flow for the upgrade is 0.5 million gallons per day or NGD. And that's about twice the average flow to the capacity or to the treatment plant right now. So there's plenty of of capacity there for expansion growth down the road. The peak flow is is really associated with an an hourly flow event. So flow to the treatment plant varies over a given day and and in this case, that factor is a factor of two. So the hourly peak flow for the facility is 1 million gallons per day, flow rate of 1 NGD. And then BOD and TSS, BOD is biochemical oxygen demand and TSS is total suspended solids. So those are loading criteria for coming into the plant. So the strength of the wastewater that needs to be treated and those were based off of sampling that's done over done at the plant over, you know, the past few years. And those were determined to be 325 milligrams per liter and 300 milligrams per liter is indicated in this chart. So that was the design criteria, the basic design criteria used to come up with the the design of the upgraded facility. Next slide, Todd. This process flow diagram kind of walks us through the overall process and and many of these processes are typical of any wastewater treatment plant. And we'll just walk through it really quickly to give you an idea of of what is going to be installed at the facility once the project is complete. Todd, if if you can use your cursor, maybe you can follow along. It starts right in the middle of the sheet on the left hand side where it says from collection system, there's some green, the lines are kind of a darker green. Yep. And and that's where the flow comes into this plant. And the first thing we do is we measure the flow in this the partial flow. So that's just a way to keep track of how much flow is entering the treatment plant. And it's typical that that has to be recorded and and submitted to the state as part of the monthly reporting process. After that, we move to the headworks portion of the plant and that includes dual screening channels where mechanical, automatic mechanical screens will be installed that remove deleterious materials, so plastics and and large solids that shouldn't go through the rest of the treatment plant and and that are inorganic in nature that are you know, can't be treated through the process. So those are removed at that process and then the flow comes back together and goes through a grit removal process where rocks, gravel and sand are also removed from the waste stream so that they don't go downstream and have impact on pumps or accumulate in basins over time. From there, we go into the the main component of the treatment process, which is the biological treatment process. In this case, it's an oxidation ditch, which has a couple chambers in it that help reduce the biochemical oxygen demand and also nutrients such as nitrogen as part of that process. From there, we go to separation stage, which in this case is clarifiers. We have two secondary clarifiers. And that's where the biology and solids that are in the wastewater are separated generally from the effluent or clear water that'll come out of the back of the plant. So those solids generally are heavier. So these basins just allow them to settle out while the clear water goes over the weirs at the top of the basins. That comes back together and then goes down towards the bottom of the page on the left hand side to one of the two tertiary cloth filters, which further separate any remaining solids or turbidity from the effluent. And that, you know, those solids will go back to the front of the plant and then that clear water will continue on and go to the disinfection process, which in this case utilizes ultraviolet light to inactivate bacteria and viruses prior to being discharged either to the outfall, which is the bottom line there, or going into the the city or the sorry, the county's affluent reuse slash irrigation system. Got some storage onsite and and adjacent to the site. And then it can be pumped into that reuse slash irrigation system. From a solid standpoint, at the clarifiers, we also have those brown lines which come off and get pumped into one of the two solids holding tanks. Those are just aerobic tanks, meaning they're kept with oxygen. So they're aerated and have oxygen in them, which reduces any potential odors and basically just allows the operators to hold those solids until they can be further processed in the de-watering process, which is is kind of on the left top side of the of the flow diagram. And the de-watering process just further removes water from the solids, makes it, you know, so that you can haul those solids off and with much less volume. So it reduces the volume of the solids so that they can easily be removed to the plant, to the the county's composting facility. In general, that's the overview of the the process and and what will be there at the end of this project. The next sheet shows the hydraulic profile and this is something, you know, we we use to show how the water will flow through the treatment plant and and just to make sure that all the structures are at the right elevations and that no structures get overtoped. You don't have spills at the treatment plant. This is a pretty simple hydraulic profile and it goes from from left to right at the top and then then it moves down to the second segment, which is is also left to right. And this plant, like I said, is really simple. We don't have to pump the main flow. Once it comes into the plant, it's the plant slope, natural slope is such that we can just gravity flow through the whole plant with that main flow. So a very simple and and efficient way to have flow move through a wastewater treatment plant. This is the site layout for the facility and and what we're trying to show here is just the general phasing of of this project and how it will get constructed. You can see there are some structures here that are are hatched with some diagonal lines. Those structures eventually get removed or re or or abandoned in place as part of this project. The green structures, for the most part, are are new structures, although a few of those is is Todd was indicating, especially around the existing office and the solids holding tanks are existing structures that get repurposed. Those, all those green processes are are in phase one, or they'll be the first things that get done as part of this project. They'll be constructed while the existing treatment plant continues to treat flow throughout that construction period. And then, once those structures are ready to be started up and commissioned, the flow will be diverted to the that the process is all in green. That'll be put online and tested out. And once it's ready to fully treat the influence stream, then the flow will be diverted completely to that and and the structures sort of on the north or it's really more west side of the plant would be would stop receiving the flow from the plant. And then we would be able to remove those processes that won't stay. And then the ones in orange. Sorry, I got muted. Those ones in orange would be repurposed to their new their new purpose in the plant. So so that's kind of how the process is phased and it's it's a very simple phasing approach and and really allows for construction to occur in a simple manner without with minimal impacts to the existing treatment process during construction, which is great. Just makes for easier construction. So.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. So on on public impacts and Andrea and and Justin already sort of alluded to some of these things that all of the work is is on the existing facility site. The the site is fenced. There's enough land within the fenced area for construction, storage area, and also to do the the new construction activities for the facility. So that's certainly a benefit of the project and limiting public impacts during construction. Some other requirements that will be placed on the contractor is they will have to work normal working hours. Typically, that's from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, with no, no work on the weekends. That's to, again, limit public impacts during during off normal working hours time. We do expect some increased construction traffic to the facility. That's just for delivery of materials. Obviously, the contractor will need to have items brought to the site. We will need concrete and other items. And so increased traffic on Overlook Road is expected. And we will have a slight amount of construction to occur within Overlook Road, even though all of the facility improvements occur within the fenced limits of the facility. There was some offsite drainage considerations taken that required improvements along Overlook. Those those improvements include just curb and gutter installation with some swales, minor drainage improvements. So we're not looking at a major change to the roadway, but I do expect some construction activities to occur on Overlook, along with some traffic detouring during that time. You know, as Justin mentioned, a key part of this is the facility must remain operational during the entire construction period. That's obviously a critical thing for the success of this project. And we expect construction activities to take about 18 months. So the final slide that we have is just to go over the schedule as to where we're at and and also how much longer it's going to take to complete. So the items in red are showing things that have been completed to date. Again, we have completed through the 95% design. We expect the final design to be completed in a in the March timeframe and construction, construction starts near July 2021. Again, with the 18 month duration for the construction of the project, it will take nearly till the end of 2022 to complete all the construction activities for this project. So with that, Clay, I'll pass it back to you for any opening up to questions.
Great. Thank you, Todd and Justin. So now at this point,
So now, at this point, we're going to open this up for a sort of a question and discussion. So if you could go ahead and raise your hand. If what we're going to do is you can eat, you can either type your question or comment, or we'll let you actually speak. So if if you want to go ahead and and do that, go ahead and raise your hand. Looks like we have one already. So I'm going to go ahead and allow people to go ahead and ask vocally their question or or make a comment. But if you if you'd rather type it, feel free to do that. Okay, we have one question from a member of the audience, so.
Ms. Jacob? I think, yeah, I was gonna say, I think you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I want to be sure the footprint of the plant, it remains the same as as what exists presently. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know if we can go back to that slide. So so there is, there is a single parcel on which the current plant resides. So we are staying within that same area. As a matter of fact, there were some old drying beds from the original plant that are being removed so that we can put the new, so the things that you see in green here, the structures are in green. So the going from left to right, you see that there's a headworks that that will be a new structure, but on the same parcel on which the the current plant resides, the next structure to the right actually exists now. We're repurposing it. So so nothing is really changing in the footprint there. Now, moving over to the right and toward the bottom, these are going to be new structures, but they're taking the place of current structures that have been taken taken out of service. So, yes, the the site is going to basically reside within the same footprint that the plant uses now.
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Okay. Environmental impact is, what what is the noise level of the plant after completion? And with respect to the residences that adjoin the park?
Well, I'm, so I'll just answer this speaking from experience. The wastewater, the the new plant will not contribute any further noise than the current plant does. If anything, it'll probably be quieter. I mean, I think right now some of the pumping and we had to install a motorized central pivot arm on one of the trickling filters. And when I'm there now, I can hear those. They're not loud, but but those motors will no longer be there. So so motor noise will be reduced. Like we discussed in the in the hydraulic profile, most everything now is going to be moving by by gravity. I think the the only pumping that's really going to take place is for the solids pump. And those are going to be basically no more than what's there now.
Okay. Do we have a level of what's there now?
I don't know that we've quantified that. But when you're, when you currently, when you're out at the plant, no matter where you are, you can always have a normal conversation. So it's not, it's not above a level at which you have to like raise your voice to have a conversation. And when you're up at the road or at one of the softball fields that are adjacent to this site, you don't detect any further noise, any any noise, not even background noise unless really trying to.
In in the evenings, anytime, in the winter time, you don't hear it. But in the evenings, this past summer, you could hear the sewer plant all all just about all night long. You could tell when they they stopped using the some of the machinery went down, you could hear it stopping.
You know, that might be actually the the irrigation booster pumps that the that the parks and rec use to irrigate the overlook fields. And that's actually a separate project. Those pumps are outside and those are bigger and they're, they they do make noise. So so I I would agree that you can hear those. So running concurrently with the construction of the plant, this is a separate project. It's it's not part of this one, but but it is related. We are actually replacing and building a new effluent irrigation system because that system that you're referring to is old and it and it is loud. You're you're right.
Well, I I'm not sure if that that's what it is or if it's the sewer plant itself, but but this summer you could really hear the sewer plant operating.
Yeah, it could be now that that motor for that central pivot arm on one of the existing effluent, where it says effluent storage, those are the current trickling filters. That motor for that for that pivot arm, that's a big motor and I can hear that motor. And it it will be gone. I think that's the loudest, that that's the biggest contributor to noise out there is the is that motor that runs that arm. That's something we had to, we had to install probably nearly 10 years ago because that trickling filter pivot wasn't working. And and that thing does make noise because it's a pretty big motor.
Okay, so how are we going to know with this construction if it in fact is not as loud as as what we're experiencing? If we don't have any data on that.
Well, I I can tell you this, a lot of the things that contribute to the noise now are going to be gone. The only, the only things that 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 we will have running is a is a smaller motor that turns the mixers on the oxidation ditch and the the solids pumps moving things from the clarifiers back to the solids holding tank. And those are all smaller motors. So I mean, just you know, speaking from our experience, tho- those are things that are much quieter than than what we have out there now. Everything we have out there now is just, it's just older. And and it's probably at the point at which, you know, it's it's past its functional life and kind of needs to be replaced. And they make noise once they get older. I don't know how else to answer that. I mean, I, I, yeah.
I guess I don't have any other questions. I guess I, what I am concerned is that that, I mean, I can accept the fact that if there's less noise and newer equipment, that there won't be as much noise. But I would, if the county can can measure the noise, the current noise level, and so that sometime in the future, we can look at what the what the noise level is in the future, too.
Okay.
Because then isn't that part of environmental impact?
We're taking notes there. I don't know that it's a part of the current environmental impact, but it is something that we can review. So
And and I think it should be looked at because depending on where you are with respect to the Mesa, you get a different where your house is with with respect to the Mesa, you get a different sound. You get different volume, I guess, is really what I'm saying.
Okay.
Hey, the other item is the recirculation pumps that are outside right now will also be housed indoors. I mean, all pumps will be indoors. So that that's another pump that's outside that's going to be enclosed in a new building, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just last thing, so newer pumps are nowhere near as 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 noisy as older style pumps. So that that's a constant issue with with municipal operations as people are always concerned about noise levels. And so pumps have been improved over the years to consider noise levels. And with them being housed indoors, you know, that that will that will muffle a lot of the sound that that even these newer pumps still make. But we have it, we have it now lodged as a as a concern of yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have quite a few questions here. First one here is, will the new facility expand its existing footprint? I think we went over that one. Specifically, will the outer fencing that currently exists be expanded to cover more of an area to the east or to the west? No, there, we're not changing any of the outer fencing in terms of what area it encompasses. It's going to be exactly the same. This is, this is a delineated parcel that we're going to remain inside. And now another question is, will the discharge outflow exit the new facility where it currently does? Yes, that's a very specific part of our discharge permit. We have a point of discharge that will remain the same. Let's see here, moving on down. Is there any opportunity to construct a small 100 yard long wetland area between the current discharge area and the place where water cascades over the edge of the canyon to the east? I, we, we are not going to be making any changes to that point of discharge out there at this point. It's been stabilized in the not too distant past. And I think that those, we we don't want to mess with that right now. And that's not part of this project. Those are specifically regulated things and and we're, it's not something that we're going to, that's easily accomplished. So so no, we're not going to make any changes to the point of discharge. Let's see. A comment here, FYI, the existing facility is one of the top hotspots for animal activity, especially birds in the county. Yeah, we're aware of that. So outside of the construction perimeter, we're not doing anything there. Hopefully, just by improving water quality, you know, that will improve the the overall and the whole circle of the environment. Will there be any open standing water exposed that could serve to attract birds to the area? Currently, there is a the holding pond for the irrigation system is going to remain the same so that that pond will continue to exist in terms of other open basins. Only the oxidation ditch has a little bit of open, but generally those don't because of the all of the turbulence and and mixing and and everything that's happening there, those don't really attract birds very much. The clear, I guess the clarifiers sometimes do, but not really. We did have the comment that the recycling pumps for the plant that that those will be housed indoors, as will all other pumps. Let's see here. Okay, another question from the attendees, how and who is paying for this? And is it included into the National Defense Authorization Act? Okay, so earlier we started to go over this and maybe this is a good time to have Andrea Telmo with an NMED discuss how the loan program is structured. It is a loan that the county has to pay back. So Andrea, do you want to discuss how that loan is structured and how the program works?
Sure. So construction, also design as well, has been paid for out of the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. That funding comes from the US EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, and is administered through the New Mexico Environment Department. And so the county, I'd have to pull up their loan documents, but I believe, was it 2018 when you guys applied? I don't remember, or 2019. But basically
It was 2018 was the application, 2019, April of 2019 is when it was executed, approved and executed.
Okay, so basically, the county applied for funding through from the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. And the New Mexico Environment Department reviewed the preliminary engineering report and the environmental information document, which are requirements of the funding, and those were both approved. And the county received a loan. Clay, do you know offhand what the loan amount is by any chance?
Yeah, the loan amount is 17 million.
Okay.
The original, the original estimate was something like 15 million? Or it just, just a little bit under, but but because of contingency, the state made the loan at 17 million. And even with things, all of our estimates and the way things have changed, I think we're still staying just below that 17 million threshold. So obviously, things have kind of gone up with our current market conditions, but we're still staying below that with the current construction estimates.
All right. And and then Clay, I don't know if you want to also talk about basically how in terms of the loan repayment. So with the loan repayment, repayment doesn't start until one year after construction is completed. So after the project is completed, we will issue the county a final loan agreement and amortization schedule based on the total funds that were expended. So even though the loan was about $17 million, not all of that funding may be used in the project. But it isn't until the end of the project that we know how much funding was expended.
Right.
And so I guess, yeah, loan repayment is probably covered through the county's existing fees, utility fees. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we have a, we have a we have a repayment program and plan in place. It gets accounting, accounting gets interesting when it comes to repaying these. But yes, it comes from our, from our rate, from our rates.
Right. Oh, and then I think one more thing I'll add is when when we get a an application for funding, we do review the entity's finances to ensure that the loan can be repaid.
Also note that that we, the county has gone, we we've sort of restructured how our our contribution to the county's general fund is being used. And so the county now wants the contribution that the that the utilities department used to put back into the general county, they want that money to be used for infrastructure projects such as this. So it's almost like the county's turning that back over to the utilities department to to improve infrastructure with projects such as this. Let's see, moving down the line here, another question here or a comment was that the environmental impact statement listed about that the, uh, environmental impact statement listed about 10 different species of birds that breed in this area. In fact, that list would be larger than that. Um, over 150 birds, different bird species have been reported at the current facility. I can, I can, I can imagine that is true. I, you know, uh, when, when you take these projects on, um, these environment companies, they, they have certain thresholds at which they report those, um, which birds, uh, and species, um, are impacted in the area. And, uh, sometimes they don't report on all of the, on every single type for different reasons. Um, let me see, note that the lower, uh, pueblo outflow has a wonderful wetland area. Yep, uh, a lot of people have made that same comment that they want to make sure that that, uh, wetland all the way to the, uh, river is maintained and, and we do have, there will be, I mean, just the wa- s- same amount of waters coming and going that, all of that's not going to change. Um, it's just going to be, uh, better quality water. Um, and yeah, in the wintertime, we do drain the holding pond for the, for the irrigation system. Let's see, are there any other questions? So regarding the, um, the footprint, just let's, let's, uh, make sure that, uh, everybody understands that the, that this entire project is staying within the original wastewater treatment plant, uh, footprint. No expansion is, is occurring whatsoever. Everything, every bit of land that's being used is, is land that's been used in the past. We will, um, discuss, uh, the noise level and so that we have, uh, some data to use there. Um, but, um, empirically speaking, pumps are going in, indoors and, and modern pumps are, are a lot less noisy than what we have out there now. Um, we have, we, another question here, will there be future opportunities to comment? There is a public comment, uh, period following this. And I, Andrea, is it, is it 30 days following this public hearing?
Right, so what'll happen next is, um, basically after this public hearing, um, that this, there'll be a transcript provided and the environmental information document will be finalized. And then the New Mexico Environment Department will prepare an environmental assessment that is based on the environmental information document and all the consultation, coordination and, um, public comment received to date. Now, um, that E, that environmental assessment or EA will be prepared and along with a preliminary finding of no significant impact. Uh, that finding of no significant impact or Fonzie will be provided to Los Alamos County and will be advertised in the paper. And there's a 30 day comment period on the EA and the Fonzie. And on the, in that, um, in the advertisement will be the contact information on where to submit your comments to, and that will likely be me.
Okay, I think we've, hopefully we've answered, uh, answered all of the questions. If there are no other, um, comments or questions, we will go ahead and conclude the hearing.